What we have finished with and recycling the vast majority of the remainder, leaving little else for disposing. However, in the immediate future, our best option as a local authority is to increase recycling rates to compete with the best in the country. We have some ground to make up in this respect. In 2013-14, the latest full year for which there are available, Liverpool had the lowest percentage of recycling, A, of the local authorities in the north west of England, at twenty-six point seven percent. In comparison, Manchester was at thirty-four point nine percent and Wigan was at fifty percent. Elsewhere, Bexley Council in London was already recycling more than fifty-five percent of its waste. We believe that our national target should be seventy percent by 2020. An example of forward thinking is in Scotland, which developed a zero-waste policy in 2010, including banning food waste that is collected separately from going to landfill, and a commitment to ban any biodegradable municipal waste from going to landfill by 2021. We in Liverpool need therefore to do more, and recycling some items that are already recycled on the Mersey side is one way of doing that. Food waste, textiles and aluminium foil are resources that are collected separately and recycled before they go into the county, rather than taken to landfill. We want to see the new local authorities trading quickly, following suit in the short term, and working with the M and UVA, moving ahead on the recycling of many of the items that are recycled in local authorities throughout the country. councillor another?
Can't believe this, this is the Green Party shutting the stable door after the horse has bolted. Why would, I mean, I completely agree, we need higher recycling targets. But it says here, to increase recycling, like we're doing other authorities, on food waste and textiles and aluminium foil, well, let's, let's actually not create food waste, let's not create textile waste, let's actually look at how we manage our food at home first, rather than recycling the waste that's being created. So I just don't understand why you'd want to look at increasing the recycling or something you shouldn't be doing in the first place, I would say. And in addition to that, in Old Swan, there's about eleven charity shops that all collect classes of recycled clothing. And actually, the city does a really good job, and a lot of people in our communities go to charity shops and do just that. And if you go to some of the big supermarkets, they've got huge bins at their car parks, where you can put aluminium foil, and you can put clothing, and you can put other stuff in as well. Actually, I agree, we need to do more, but let's also use less. And that's what I thought the Green Party should be promoting, rather than shutting the stable door when the horse is away down the street, actually.
councillor Appleton?
Can I say a couple of constructive things? One thing is the council is different, and I know it's something we promote and suggest it, even though we may disagree for best location, is actually new recycling centres in Guelph, so people in need to Liverpool can have reasonable access and easy access, not to travel to encourage recycling, and also just some people off, off the pub and the boot of recycling needs. It's a practical measure, another practical measure we've done in our awards, and I know other colleagues have done their own awards, is use the neighbour grant to actually do composting schemes. We've had five hundred household volunteers who took an award, take composting in, to then recycle food waste. Now, I think, with the greatest respect to Gary Mayall, not sure if he cooks, but if he do cook, then there will be some food waste, whether you particularly like it or not, and you can use some of the non-cooked food waste for composting rather than to recycle. You can also use that to encourage your local lots. And I think there's been irony, the very party that opposed the last allotment in the city was the Green Party. That is a way of encouraging recycling. The Green Party opposed, across the board, going to two big mammoth bin collection. So apart from saying they want to raise the target, where we've taken measures to do that, the Green Party's opposed all those practical measures. So I really do think, I don't know about the horse has bolted, I think the horse has just shot itself in the foot, because when you have a chance to do it, no. Now, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to be meeting council offices on Thursday, because I am concerned, some of the two big collections in some areas in my world, maybe it's more counterpointed, and I'm going to try and work through, we go, no, we've got to fight this week, and they couldn't make the main decision, thank you very much, dear. But what we will do is, we will meet them, and we will discuss how to improve communications. And I'm going to be honest, I've been upfront, in my own street, Terrace Street, there's probably only one in five households who use blue bins. We need to really educate the public about green recycling. I don't think we're going to do it by having separate bins for food waste and aluminium and textiles. I think we've actually got to be careful how, we've got, I mean, I know in some authorities, they have five or six different bins, and have different collection bins. I think we've got to think, what's going to be able to take the public with us to make those achievements, and we'll try and do our bit.
mayor Alves?
Lord Mayor, I think, you know, sometimes I think the Greens think the green, the old saying of the Greens. The fact of the matter is, is that we inherited a recycling deficiency, you know, we've hacked that and left that, and it's climbing and getting better, and we're near where we want it. You know, fundamentally, the problem we've not been able to do more than we would like to do, is the fact that we've faced fifty-eight percent cuts. And that's reduced a lot of staff, it's took away the things that we would like to be able to do. But we are doing things, and we are doing things better. We will improve the service, we will do things better, differently. Just to give you an example of what we do, you know, as a, and links up the issue of recycling, and also of the city's ability to be greener. You look at the mayor fund that supported a company called Into Energy, it employed, when it came here, somewhere around twenty-three people. What it does is it incinerates food, it turns waste food into energy. And when it came to the mayor fund, it was short of support, the fund that couldn't get it from the bank. And we gave them that support, and now they have loaded through forty-three years, and they now employ ninety-seven staff, and they're actually growing and moving to bigger premises in Liverpool. And they're using that energy to create, that waste to create energy and supply, as they like to say, as companies where they use that food. And we've got to do that, we've got to make sure that we get better acceptables in some of our restaurants and some of our food shops. At the end of the day, and I say this with the, you know, nice people, misguided, misguided, but nice people. The fact of the matter is, we'll take lessons off you about how to manage our budget to do the things that we do, that we already do. You know, as I said before, this isn't an exercise that we're going through in the future. It's not theory, it's actually practice. That's what we do, run the city, capital time, financial time, and make an improvement. You've got to remember that later on, all the motions, talking about, oh, serve almighty, they'll talk about shooting yourselves in the foot against allotments, against the fact that we've created more green space, all of the things that are supposed to be united and supportive of it. You want to attack the odd end, we will continue to provide the facilities that improve recycling within our city. But we, we don't need your help to do that, we continue to do the right thing. And you know this company, this LACCO that you've sent up, it absolutely is something that we should be proud of, because it's our city trying to bring back in-house, something that was outsourced, something that was not delivered, and we are making it better, supporting the workforce, trying to grow the workforce, and trying to get a better, cleaner, greener city. And that's what this is about, it should be celebrated, and we should be commended for acting what we've done. And I would like to say thank you to Joe, to Steve, to the officers, and everybody that's helped, and the tribunions, for working with us, because it means that we can aim to bring it eventually, eventually, back in house in a few years' time. But the reality is, it gives us the opportunity to improve the service without anybody.
councillor Crowe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just in response to the, Tony took about needing advice from the Greens about how to improve recycling and stuff, the person that we proposed on the table there suggested things that can be recycled but aren't in Liverpool. Liverpool, the city, the local authority in the north west with the lowest recycling rates, you should be living it even more seriously, and considering taking on new things that you can recycle, rather than just making a speech that sort of suggests that you're doing really well and you're really progressing recycling in the city. Actually, a lot of work needs to be done, radical change needs to take place very quickly. And rather than just mocking suggestions that come your way, you should try to actually listen and take some of them on board.
councillor Wood, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Particularly what councillor Wood has just said there about recycling more, the things that the Greens have put forwards as things we should be recycling, actually come from policies that the Green Party had when they ran Brian's Brian Council. When recycling rates went down by five percentage points, we put in management collections here, which the Greens oppose, and our recycling rates went up by five percentage points. We're more than willing, in this city council, to look at ways to improve recycling, we are always looking at ways to increase our rates. But I think it is quite rich for you to be lecturing us on these, when green policies such as this have been shown not to work, we will do it and we'll make it work. Every councillor in this room should be looking at ways to increase recycling. And I'm sure we'd all welcome the Green Party working with us to get better practice and draw up our recycling rates, practically and properly. This motion, however, is not about what we recycle and what we could recycle, it's about the LACCO, it's about making a cheaper and a better and a more effective management company and waste company for our city, not about collecting aluminium foil.
voting's on the amendments, all those in favour? All those against? For the amendment four, against sixty-five, no abstentions, the amendment has lost. Substantive motion, but I have got a number of speakers, do you still wish to speak, wish to speak? councillor Mitchell Hansen though?
I'm not confused, I had a rousing speech ready to do, but I've bounced it.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. So, okay. Both have gone on the main motion, all those in favour? Is that unanimous? Well.
Standing in his name?
Thanks, old man. I think our base speech was possible, I mean, this motion simply sets out to do one thing and one thing only. And it's before council tonight to recognise the work of all the parties involved in the London Bramblefield Streets project. The project, as most councillors know, most members know, is nominated for the prestigious Turner Prize. It's one of the four streets, one of the four streets is shortlisted for the National Great Streets Award. And when you think how far that area has come in the past few years, it is an unbelievable achievement. And it's thanks to a long and determined fight by local residents, that we now have refurbished houses, we have redefined public spaces, we've got new work, new enterprises, opportunities in the area. But the success of the Four Streets is really a celebration of real public empowerment, where local residents working in partnership, and I stress that, in partnership with the city council and social landlords, have come together in their community land trust to make those changes. There's also been the involvement of young artists and architects working alongside residents who've really thrown themselves into the project, and they've given the project an added dimension that's been recognised nationally, and I think that's partly how we ended up in the Turner Prize nomination. The motion salutes the endeavour of partnership work and the sheer resilience of the community effort put in by so many people who have worked with the council to turn houses into homes, to turn streets into public spaces, and to restore the community, a community that the people who lived in are so proud of. And I hope all members, regardless of the amendments, all members in the chamber, will support this motion, and work with the administration, the government administration, the Labour administration, to promote this example of true partnership working as we move forward in our drive to improve housing across the city. Thank you for that.
is there an announcement, councillor Crowe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, I wouldn't take that mention of the, of the motion's fairness. Basically, regards to the Turner Prize, it's a really fantastic success story for the area. Park Town has had more than its fair share of the difficult times over the years, but we really wanted to focus all the pride with incredibly resilient and imaginative local residents. It was local residents who were threatened by demolition, hanging over them, set about transforming the streetscape there, painting boarded up houses, planting vegetables out in the streets, and starting the Four Streets market. It was grassroots community organisations who developed the plan which now comes to keep fruition to get recognised by the Turner Prize, and they secured the funding to deliver. It took a long time for the council to come round and latch on to the success of the Four Streets revival, so rather than trying to act there, let's applaud those who did the real work. It would be fantastic for the city if you could learn new ways from this of delivering regeneration elsewhere, and get a similar outcome in the rest of our city. To my mind, an obvious candidate for this approach lies just across Prince's Avenue, the Wall Street. Since the shot of seeing my own Pickles to stop the past day plans, we've had another long period of complete inaction of the Wall Streets. So far, residents have been in the vote for eight months, while the council appealed a decision with no idea how likely it appears to succeed. Perhaps time to come to seriously consider a Plan B for this area. The Wall Streets, home roots, developed designs which retain a lot of existing terraces where possible, and have a mixture of self-built and standard new building of vacant plots, similar in some ways to what's happening with Bramble. It could just be, if the council allowed it to happen, a community-led, creatively-designed, creatively-funded project could be similar awards in an area of Liverpool, that would be lighted by the mistakes of decision-makers for many years now. According to the council, the purpose of the communities is to put into the actions, put into action, is the idea of using Bramble as a blueprint for areas, and start processes of releasing the Wall Streets, which creates.
councillor Wood?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome the lengthy comments by councillor Hunt. The Four Streets project is, as he said, an excellent example of how communities and the council can work together to develop a response to the challenges faced by communities who continue to be ambitious for their area despite the cuts that this government has forced on them. And it's right to be welcomed, and it's right that we recognise it, and it's right that other organisations and agencies like the Turner Prize have done so too. And it's because we recognise the value of supporting where we can the ambitions and desires and creativity of local residents, that it's so disappointing to see the Greens amend a motion that really could stand on its own. And it's even more disappointing to see them amend with something that, as far as I'm concerned, is already happening in house for some time, because Wall Street residents have and are involved in the design and implementation of housing regeneration proposals. In fact, they've done it and then compromised on many occasions, they've done it and compromised to suit English heritage, they've done it and compromised to seek consensus with heritage organisations, they've done it and then compromised to secure agreements so that the vast majority of residents could agree on a way forward, and they've also done it to the satisfaction of the independent planning inspector. Sadly, however, there remain some organisations who refuse to play their part in supporting the ambition and creativity of these residents, Eric Pickles, and it still appears the Liverpool Green Party. So, Lord Mayor, if this amendment is, as I had hoped when I saw it, a recognition by the Greens that our job must be to support the views of residents, whether on refurbishment in the Four Streets or demolition and rebuild in the Wall Streets, then I would welcome it. But if, as it appears clear, following the speech from councillor Crowe, that it is an attempt to use the recognition of the success of one group of residents to limit the ambitions of another, then I think that is a great shame. Lord Mayor, facts, realities and funding all change, and I believe that all partners involved throughout the long journey that Four Streets residents have gone through have always tried to act with the best intentions, even when they disagreed. But what's clear is that for some residents, this at times felt like it was us saying we know better than you do. And that's something that I recognise has felt. And surely the right response to that reality is to celebrate the Four Streets' success, but also stand together against those who continue to tell the Wall Streets residents that they don't know what's best for their homes. Let's support the motion as it stands and not play politics with the very creativity and resilience of residents that the Green amendment claims to welcome.
councillor, councillor Hunt?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I didn't want to comment again, but I just felt I couldn't resist coming in. Dean, I want to speak against the amendment, this amendment is an unnecessary piece of political point cutting. I've met privately Tom Cron to talk about the Wall Street proposals and try and come together with everyone who's interested in the Wall Street proposal to make progress, and we are making progress on it. And the amendment simply takes out of our motion any reference to partnership working. This would not have gone ahead without partnership working. I play credit in my speech to the effort, determination, the resilience of the local community, but they accept that we had to make progress together in partnership, and that's what this council does, and it grieves me, right, because I especially reject this amendment, because it stands in the name of a party who did precious little to move the Wall Street proposals forward.
voting's on the amendments, all those in favour? For the amendment four, against sixty-four, no abstentions, the amendment has lost. Substantive motion, all those in favour? The unanimous? On the roll, you?
We want to speak on this longer.
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Item eleven, could I invite councillor Robertson to move the motion in her name?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this is a simple motion, we're calling on council to support the National Remembering Eleanor Rafferty campaign, a campaign over the next twelve months to hold lectures and events in this city and in other cities to celebrate the anniversary of Eleanor Rafferty's death, which was in January nineteen forty-six. Eleanor was one of the city's greatest politicians, but I believe that her work has not been fully recognised in this city, and we need to make sure we acknowledge it fully. I don't think this is because she was a woman politician, even though as a female politician she was elected before women even had the vote, but rather, as an independent councillor, and subsequently as an independent member of parliament, she doesn't have a political party to champion her memory. But her phenomenal contribution to social reform and campaigning for those in need should really be fully acknowledged across the political spectrum, and certainly by all those of us on the left. Lord Mayor, Eleanor was born into a privileged family in Liverpool, the Raffertys have a long history as public representatives and as social reformers, and indeed she attended university, a real rarity at that time for anyone, certainly for a woman. But she worked tirelessly to help disadvantaged groups, both as a social worker and as an elected politician. So is her work and her memory merely of historical interest, or does it have more to tell us than is it more relevant today? A very quick look at some of the issues she worked on. Firstly, women's suffrage. I find that we'd hope that we had won, I think everyone in this room would hopefully agree that women should vote. But only on Sunday we're discussing women's political representation again, as our leader appointed his new cabinet, it's still very much an issue. And a couple of months ago, my colleague councillor Small had to move a motion here due to the vagaries of IVR, that disadvantaged groups could lose their right to vote and fall off the electoral register. She also campaigned against the abomination that is female genital mutilation. At that time, it wasn't an issue in the UK, but in our colonies, so a historical anachronism, you may think. But again, it's an issue we've had to debate in this chamber very recently. She fought against fascism, I hardly have to mention, we only discussed that one a couple of hours ago. She was doing it at a time when it was a very difficult issue, when people were moving towards appeasement. She also campaigned for refugees to be helped and supported. At that time, they were coming from Central Europe rather than going to Central Europe. But again, it's only been an hour or so since we discussed that issue tonight. And most notably, she campaigned tirelessly for welfare payments to go to women to support children. That may seem slightly sexist to us now, looking back from the twenty-first century, but at that time, of course, women had no financial income at all, no independence, no control over their finance. And some of the male labour trade union leaders whilst campaigning for a welfare state were actually opposed to women being given that money, because they felt it may undermine their dominance in the home. But Eleanor doggedly worked to make sure that that money went to women to feed children, and it led to the instigation of family allowances, which we now know as child benefit. So another battle won, we would think. Yesterday, the Tories voted to cut child tax credits to working families, hitting low-paid women and children, the very people that Eleanor worked to set that system up to support. Lord Mayor, if Eleanor could walk in now, I don't know if she would be depressed, but nearly a hundred years later, we're still debating and campaigning for the same issues, or whether she would just think how ironic that that was. But it's all the more important then, that her work is promoted and that council recognises the work of this indomitable campaigner. Certainly would be so in Green Benwood, when we're proud that she was a resident.
I really want to say a few words, I think speaking of this motion is kind of like trying to sell apples to an orchid owner. When I'm not in this chamber, I work for an organisation called PSX, and Eleanor Rafferty was our founder. Started back in nineteen eighteen, following the First World War, it was an organisation to help tackle all of the social issues that there was going on at the time. An indomitable spirit, it still lives on today, almost a hundred years at length. From PSX was born Agent Same and late citizens of Vice Perro, which I know everyone in this room is familiar with. Young Carers, the first ever Young Carer service, recognising that there are children in our communities who look after their parents even though they shouldn't be. Sharelives, which is one of my favourite solutions to support vulnerable adults, which is kind of like a foster placement for an adult, where you go and live in a family rather than being in any such institution or home. All of these things and all of this work, we're going to be talking about that at the end, excuse me. And it's still going on today. In twenty nineteen, we celebrated our centenary, and, you know, in the current climate of austerity and cuts, where we all do and cuts, where we are losing the money to help those most vulnerable. Today, we are helping thousands, thousands of people across the UK, and it's only because of people like Eleanor Rafferty who are there that are very beginning. So I only got the biggest respect for this campaign and hope everyone will support it.
Are there any other speakers?
Just the same, whether we would have supported this across my party, we'd be happy to vote for this motion.
councillor Roberts?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Crowe for this point of the motion. As councillor Robinson-Golding said, the Rafferty family have a very long tradition in the city. It's not just Eleanor, she, there's many generations of William Rafferty who acted as philanthropists. We've currently got Jenny Rafferty, who's serving as a member of the Welsh Assembly. And possibly one of the greatest Raffertys is Hazel Rafferty, who played Sherlock Holmes. And anyone who tells you that Benedict Cumberbatch is better is wrong. She was elected in 1909, the first woman on the city council to represent the Granby Ward, where she was an intimitable campaigner for, to improve in the social condition of the people in the city. She did campaign all her life for women's rights. As councillor Carrigan pointed out, she was the first chair in the time of PSX. But even more than that, she actually replaced Millicent Fawcett as the president of the Women's Suffrage Movement when she's had presence. It wasn't just abstract ideas, it was on practical issues. She campaigned against unfair insurance regulations that meant that married women weren't allowed to access insurance in the way that husbands would have been. And that was all before she was elected to Harlem, time 1920, Nellie, for the combined university seat. And anyone who knows me will know that I'm fond of those seats, even though they were abolished in 1950 for being only the reserve of people who had graduated from one of the English universities because they were elected by STV, which makes Eleanor Rafferty one of the last MPs to be elected by STV in this country. Laura touched on her support for refugees from Central Europe, but it's worth just emphasising that going to the streets. She saw what happened during Kristallnacht in Austria, Germany and Czechoslovakia. And she pressed very strongly for refugees to be allowed to come to the UK, which is pressing. She argued for cheaper milk for the most deprived families during the depression. She, I think we get the impression she was an indefatigable campaigner for improving the social condition. During the Spanish Civil War, she attempted to hire a ship to rescue Republicans who were stranded in Spain. And her crown in June was probably the introduction of the family grounds, despite the attacks that it faces now in its current form. She died in 1946, so next year is her 70th anniversary. Her family home, Green Bank House, is currently being refurbished and will be available for use by the public, which is fantastically new. And we think it's only fitting that a new or some form of public art work should be erected in Green Bank, part of the Ashford. So just to finish, I think perhaps my favourite thing that she said is in response to criticism that despite being an independent, she was actually a socialist. And she said, yeah, she said, if it's socialism, there's much wrong in the present social conditions, that the rich are too rich and the poor too poor, and they're everywhere that live who does a fair day's work, should receive a fair day's wage, a wage upon which he or she can live and not merely exist, that the city council should set the example of being a model employer, that drastic action should be taken against unsanitary slums, and that there should be a gradual effort to level the conditions as to housing, education, opportunities for holidays and recreation, hours of labour and rates of wages. If to hold these views as socialism, then I'm socialist.
Thank you. I haven't got any other speakers to ask, so can we go to the votes, all those in favour? Is that unanimous? Very good. Item 12, could I invite councillor Emily Swann to do the motion standing in there?
Lord Mayor, can I second that and reserve my rights? Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not going to speak on this blog because I think emotion kind of says what it needs to. By far and away, the most common issue that my residents raised with me is the state of the roads. They're fed up of seeing more potholes appear and just get patched up time and time again. Thanks to previous administration, our roads have been chronically under-invested, and so this is very much well overdue. And yeah, as soon as we started to give it, the direct investment that we so desperately need, it's been called in and has been delayed. We have a backlog of £399 million worth of highway maintenance that needs to be done. And yet we only get £3 million a year in order to keep up with it. And I'm pretty sure everyone here can read the maths of that one. And if we don't invest now, we are simply making the problem worse. And you say in your amendment that we should consult with residents, well, I can tell you now, I've already consulted mine and they want this to happen. And I get it, we all get it, we all want to improve our cycling provision in the city. We have already invested huge amounts in doing just that, save deductions, more cycle lanes, cycling proficiency. But it has to be a balance. Bringing this road investment forward does not stop us continuing to invest in cycling across the city. And removing potholes not only helps drivers, but also pedestrians and cyclists. Improving the quality of the roads benefits everyone, and I only wish that we had the funding to be able to do even more.
We have notice of an amendment, councillor Crowe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just in response to something councillor Spire just said there, it's not as soon as the council started this, we started...
councillor Crowe has a yard amendment seconded.
So yeah, I mean, you know, it's not as soon as the council started this, our way to go, we've got a reasonable track record to go on, and that's really part of the reason why we're trying to question some of the logic of that. The point is, I'm not going to get many opportunities to invest £80 million on our roads. The results of this investment is going to be with us for a long time, we're going to be paying the loans for a long time. And it's crucial, therefore, that we get this absolutely right first time. It's not really a question of, you know, time scales or delays are the big deal here. What matters is the quality of the roads and the infrastructure that we're left with at the end of this whole spending programme. At this time, I do remain convinced that there is a problem with the decision to accelerate the spending, because there is still problems with the consultation. For example, the confrontation over Archbishop Life Schools, where the confrontation period hadn't finished yet, construction had started. And you know, there are serious issues there. There's also problems with the quality of the side and the devil of focus on road users other than motor vehicles. The road system needs to consider full road use. And if as a city we've got any ambition of encouraging lots of people out of their cars and onto other transport, like bikes, we need to, we need to invest in the infrastructure that supports this. And so, Green Party have been particularly dismayed by the lack of investment in new cycling infrastructure in the programme so far. And we really strongly think we should be encouraging cycling, there's loads of reasons for that. More people chose their bikes rather than their cars, there'd be more space on the road, that would be less congestion, it would mean the boats would be repaired less often, which would save the city on in the long run. Less motor cars would mean less, climate gases being emitted, less air pollution, and cycling is great physical exercise over. A cycling city is a healthier city. But standing in the way on progress on cycling in Liverpool...
councillor Crowe, could I just ask members, could we please, you know, listen without talking, because I can't hear what councillor Crowe's saying, so... Can we, can we just, you know, keep it quiet, let's make sure you can hear what's going on?
I'll speak closer to the microphone, thank you for that feedback, people. Yeah, so, you know, the roads are just too dangerous at the moment. Last year was the worst year in the last 10 years for cyclists being killed or seriously injured in Liverpool. Really got to address this issue. And these issues were discussed in the call-in, which we triggered. There was a general agreement that cycling is a good thing and that more should be done. But this is going to take time, it's going to take effort and dedication. We need to develop our transport culture in the city so that it can rival cities such as Nantes, who after being a weak capital of Europe, increased their cycling from 2% to 5% total trips in a few years. We need to match and in fact better that here in Liverpool. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on the amendment? councillor Brown?